All the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Welcome, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Aaron Vandesteen, the Chair of the Policy Committee for the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to affirmative. Beth Galloway, Beth Schreiber.
Yeah.
Debbie Jackson.
Yeah.
And John Babriski.
Here.
Great. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find on the town's website at www.grafton- www.grafton-ma.gov allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. I, on the agenda, do we have public comment at the end? I don't have the agenda in front of me. Can someone confirm?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will say that this meeting, this meeting will feature a public comment. So for this meeting, the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees Policy Committee is convening via Zoom video conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. So please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Now, we are now turning to the first item on the agenda before we do so. Permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. And after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And for any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Okay. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first read public comments, questions received in advance of the meeting, followed by real time board and/or applicant responses. Public comments during the meeting will be conducted through the chat feature in Zoom. And the chair will read real time comments, questions typed by computer participants in the chat feature, followed by real time board and applicant responses. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Great. So I didn't see the posted agenda I was looking for on the website. I ran out of time. Do you guys mind if I take a moment to grab that or do you have it available? Beth has it. Okay. So the approval of minutes for October 19th. So I forwarded on Debbie's notes from the 19th because I think the last email was the Board of Trustee minutes. So Debbie, are those ready to be approved? Then I didn't have any changes from the 19th.
I believe so.
Okay, I'll hear a motion to approve the minutes from October 19th.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 19th.
Okay, any second?
A second motion. I'm already unmuted.
Right. What should we make a second, any discussion about the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aaron, I, Beth?
Hi.
Debbie?
Hi.
John?
John, I.
Excellent. Okay. So next item on the agenda, what do we have, Beth? Okay.
Art display policy.
Art display policy.
Yeah.
Okay. So we spent a bit of time reviewing this one at the, at the was it at the last meeting or the meeting before that?
I think it was the meeting before that, maybe, because I, the last one.
I don't actually know. It must have been the last one because we just read, we just approved the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So any additional changes before we decide that this is okay to go to legal? I think the way that we left it the last time was it might not be the right time to enact a policy like this, given the necessary staff needs in order to properly you know, oversee the policy, right, and oversee the process. So Beth and/or Debbie, did you guys talk at all internally about this policy? No. Any, any comments or feedback thought about by anybody on the committee? Since the last time we spoke? Yeah, Debbie.
My thought was just that we do have staffing issues at the library, but this is also a situation where I don't know that convening a subcommittee to call people in to come look at a display before it goes up is really necessary. As far as, I mean, you could probably just have a couple of different people that are working at the library that day, take five, 10 minutes and go in. And if there's a checklist provided to make sure that they're meeting the criteria for what's appropriate, I think that, I mean, that would probably suffice. You know, instead of, I feel like people are stretched really thin right now. And asking a group of people to, to join another committee and to make another commitment might be asking a lot when when it's something that could probably, a task that could probably be accomplished fairly quickly. I mean, we're not judging, we're not, you know, critiquing the art. We're just checking, checking to make sure that it fits the criteria for what's appropriate to be displayed.
Yep.
I think that could just take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in total agreement. I don't know if the policy calls that out specifically anywhere that we will convene a subcommittee. Anybody know if it does?
I don't think it does.
Okay.
But I guess would that be part of like the procedure for this and not the policy in how to actually implement the policy, I guess? Does that need to be?
I think the procedure would spell out what the committee would do. And that would be procedural, but the, but the policy might be the place to say that there would be a, a committee and I don't think it says that in here. It might have been something we talked about, but
I mean, do we?
It says at times a juried panel. Which would mean that if we have something that we're going, oh, we don't know if that's right, then we might call together a group of people to really take a closer look at it. But we've already established that the criteria is anything, it can fall within any of these. It doesn't have to hit all of them. Educational, cultural, intellectual, charitable or recreational nature with a preference for work of area artists and craft people.
Okay.
And then we've got the, this is sort of the checklist. Here's the criteria we'll look for, but and there might be some overlap, but nobody has to hit all of these things on this list as we're determining appropriateness. And then content, right here, we discourage material containing anything that's discriminatory, explicit violence.
Yep.
I think it's purely commercial, like those are, it's, it's part of the policy already. So I mean, if you could just make this into a checklist. But I don't think it's necessary.
So let's, let's go back to the some of the time management, right? So when we're writing policy, I mean, let's pretend that you have 100 artists that are lined up ready to display their artwork, right? Does this policy specifically tell us that, you know, we, we must, you know, review new artwork every month and you know, there's no, there's no like respite, you know what I mean? There's no, no break. If there's artwork that's lined up, we have to, you know, swap it out and display it. I think it would be nice to somewhere say you know, on, on a, not an as, as needed basis, do you know what I'm talking about? But what's the word I'm looking for?
It's covered under procedure. Priorities determined on a first come, first served basis that it can take up to three weeks for applications to be reviewed. And that we recommend that if you're looking in the next, it's kind of broken into six months block. So if you're looking to display in spring and summer, you want to send out your application by January 1st. If you're looking at fall and winter, then we want that by July 1st. So we're actually giving ourselves quite a window. But I would argue that this is actually all procedural.
Yeah.
So I don't
Yep.
Know what to do with that.
I just don't want to open ourselves to any like legal action, right? If, if somebody says, well, you said, if I do XYZ, then, then my stuff must be, you know, next, and mine's next in line, it must be up. You know, and, and I'm going to see you guys because you're not following this policy to the letter, right? So, right, so.
That's why we sent to legal. We don't have to worry about that. Jenny will look at that, I think, and say, oh, you're, you, you can say six weeks here, not, not three weeks. And you might want to put in a line that while we make, we take applications or priority as first come, first served, that we might also take into account timeliness, right? So if someone submits an application for a fall display, January 1st, and they want it to come in August, we might say, yeah, we, we have the right to push you to September because that's seasonal. We have something else already for August. So maybe there needs to be a line that says that, yes, well, priority may not be first come, first served. It might also take into account what else is happening seasonally or at the library, and that actually might be spelled out somewhere else in the policy.
Yeah.
And it is to some degree at our discretion to determine when to share, share things or exhibit things.
Yep.
I'd leave it up to Jenny.
What if the lib, what if the library wants to put up their own art displays?
Exactly.
Okay. I mean, there's lots of opportunity in and around the library to put up in a library specific stuff, right?
There's, there's, there's not a lot of wall space in our building.
Yeah, in the children's room, there's lots of opportunity, right?
No, they have a lot of windows and then the back wall is entirely taken up by seven feet of shelving.
Yep.
So they have art rail space designated for their program room, and that's likely to be kids' art on display or we're hanging artwork here to dry that they can pick up tomorrow or the next day. As opposed to here's a local artist that has a children's appropriate display that will go in the program room. It actually won't get a lot of visibility. If it's in that program room, because the program room is only for kids and their caregivers attending children's programming.
Is there any opportunity to put the art display process on hiatus, right? If, if we enact this policy and there's just nobody to administer it, available to administer it, you know, are we going to come under scrutiny because, you know, the policy says that we're going to rotate it out on a monthly basis, right? I don't like putting time, time into things because that's, that's where you can get into trouble, right? And there's a lot of time things in here that, you know, maybe Ginny can help us with, like you said. You know, when I, when I work with auditors, if you say you do something monthly or annually, well, they're going to look for it every month. They're going to look for it every year. So generally I'll use words like on a regular basis, you know, things like that, regularly instead of monthly or annually. I don't know if there's, there's room for that in this policy, but
so, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, this is actually all procedural and could be completely removed from the policy.
Yeah. Okay.
And that would be my recommendation. As far as changes.
And I was going to say, yeah, there's, I think there's probably some other considerations to make in terms of the procedure, in terms of like just general scheduling and things like that, like is it, because I know we have the, those things, some of those things in the policy of like, you know, you'll have an install date and you'll have a takedown date. But I am also foreseeing, you know, some really popular exhibit that you really want to give a chance, chance for everyone to see it. And us needing to extend the, the time that an exhibit is there. Something like that. Or, or if we don't have any other exhibits lined up, you know, then that's another reason for extension. Or, or if there's, there's too many, or if you need to reorder the schedule and like push things out, like you know, maybe it's fall and we got a late submission, but it's like just the perfect fit for the fall weather or the, the fall holidays, whatever that is. And maybe it's, it can be bumped up and, and things can be shifted back a little bit. So, but it sounds like that's more procedural than policy. Do, I guess, actually, do we have a line in here about just that? You know, the, the, the schedule is just at the discretion of the, the library? I guess that's what I might be looking for.
I think it's, I think it's this, that the Grafton Public Library reserves the right to determine at its sole discretion what materials will be displayed as well as scheduling duration and assignment of display space. And the library's decision on what will be displayed, we could add, and when is final.
I think that's pretty good.
And I think the, the appeals process probably handles a lot of this too, right? Like if somebody really wants an extension, then they can appeal, you know, through that process.
Yeah.
Okay, so should we spend a few minutes and determine what's more procedural and what, what needs to stay in the policy?
There's a procedure section at the bottom, I think, is what Beth was referring to before.
Yeah.
Is any of the other content procedural though? And does any of the other content kind of call out how, how long content, you know, should be displayed or have any dates and timelines on things? Sorry, I just, I don't have it memorized.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't memorize every day. The first thing says something about the form, like the very first section under selection, it says something about there needing to be 30 days advanced notice when you submit the form.
I mean, I guess this might be a spot to put a timeframe that we would respond to the application by.
So I, I think the language is maybe I'm just misunderstanding. If you say 30 days in advance, does that mean 30 or more days in advance, right? So I could, I can really do it, submit it, you know, a year in advance.
Well, I think I, I'd almost say that 30 days in advance, like what, in advance of what, I guess, are, is the, are, are we kind of letting the artist try to dictate the scheduling here or should we just say? Should we just remove that and just say, you know, essentially you can submit whenever we'll review it when we review it, or the library will review it whenever it's able to and you know, scheduling is handled by the library because yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if we need to say I don't know if we kind of need to allow people to say like, you know, I want this, you know, hung up in 30 days, right? And it could just be that the schedule doesn't have room for that. Yeah, so.
I think it's that if somebody wants to put up a display, what's today, the second of November, that it's now too late for them to schedule for December 1st. Because that's less than 30 days away. And if we need to schedule additional staff to assist, what, including custodial, there may be a union rule around changing people's schedules to accommodate and meet an artist to hang display. So that's probably why it's a minimum of 30 days.
Yeah, could you say to be considered for you know, the next display rotation, something, something to that effect?
I would say in the procedure, the, the artist could request like a certain timeframe, you know, like if I'm submitting in January with some sort of fall collection of art, you could say, you know, I'm requesting that this be shown, you know, starting in March or something like that. So maybe we could put something like that in to say, you know, 30 days in advance of a desired timeframe, but then also add that the library, you know, again, scheduling is up to the discretion of the library.
Yeah, advance of requested timeframe, right? Yeah. So to say that, you know, scheduling and duration, right? And then you also say it will rotate monthly, right? So I think those are in conflict, right? So we'll discuss what shows we displayed as well as scheduling duration and assignment and display spaces. But then you say it'll be rotated every 30 days, right? So
Could say maybe a typical showing time is 30 days. As in like, that's what the library may aim to, to have, you know, assuming we can get kind of 12 sets of art to show. But again, if there's just nobody signed up for the next month or two, I could see us wanting to extend somebody's showing time just to have, have some things on the wall, especially if people are enjoying it. Or if, I don't know, people get, if you get requests for things to stick around longer.
What if, what if an artist disappears? You know, to collect their artwork, right?
Free art.
Yeah, I think it says that we will discard it, but
Yeah, I mean, you just say that you'll not be responsible for it.
Yeah. We haven't know that they will remove it promptly on the agreed upon date. I don't think there's a consequence. I think it'll be treated as a donation at that point, which means it's at our discretion, but we don't have a donation policy yet. Which is problematic.
Okay. I don't have much else to provide. I'll certainly, you know, we can spend a few more minutes on it if you'd like.
Well, do you want me to add a, a consequence after this letter O, exhibitor shall remove the exhibit promptly upon the agreed upon date. Items not removed by the agreed upon date become the property of the library.
No. No.
Okay.
You could say items taken down. You know, the library will not be held responsible for items that have to be removed. You know, that are not removed by that date, something to that effect. I think the assumption would be that custodial who, who would be responsible for putting up and taking down the items. They if somebody doesn't collect their items or, or come pick up their items, we, we're not going to, we're not going to wait for them to come. We have the right to go ahead and take, take the old art down and put the new stuff up.
We don't have a place to store it.
I know.
Yeah.
So, so that's why it's really kind of, it's a, it's a free for all.
And we also have the schedule, right? Like if, assuming this is successful, we're going to have another set of art coming in the next day, the next week, whatever it is. So we need to make space for that. I, I will point out, it does say for, for section three, the display, the exhibitor is responsible for installing and labeling the exhibit. So I guess we are expecting the artist to install and remove their own things. So custodial doesn't need to get involved unless it's removing something that can't be there anymore.
Somebody has to be present. And it's probably going to default to the custodians because they're the ones who are allowed to climb ladders, deaf or not. And if we say that we are going to hang and remove art with as little disruption to the daily operations of the library, which is F, then it's probably going to take place before we open, which is when custodial is around between, you know, 7:30 and 10:00 in the morning.
So installing and labeling the exhibit, so, and so the artist is going up on the ladder to install it?
That's a good question. I don't know. Technically patrons aren't allowed to. Only custodial is allowed to.
So, so then I guess the, the artist would be directing custodial on like how high and how, how to hang something.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the art rail is up at, at ceiling height. So a step stool isn't going to do it. It's possible that custodial could prehang the chains in the clip. And then the artist wouldn't need, necessarily need to climb up on anything to install a painting or a photograph.
But he, but even if it's, if the chain and the clip is there, you'd still need to reach it, right?
Yeah.
Because it's hanging from the top down.
Are we able to get custodial resources for this? For this policy, I mean.
That's a great question. I
They may not be, even be on board for this.
Yeah. Yeah. They are not my staff to direct.
Right.
So.
So we really can't commit them, or is this kind of a, a nonstarter if, if, if we don't know? If the only way to hang stuff is with custodial?
Yeah. I would say it's a question I can ask of their supervisor. And then determine if, if it's a union issue for them.
So why do you think? Line E, exhibitor's responsible for installing. Why do you think it was written that way? Was it intended? For the exhibitor to install it? I mean. You could let legal sort it out if they feel that there's an issue. You know, with, with an exhibitor installing their own artwork.
Okay.
Although you wouldn't want an exhibitor going up and taking down somebody else's artwork. Okay.
Well, sorry, but did you say that patrons are not allowed to? Like climb ladders in the library?
Staff, staff and patrons are not allowed to.
Okay, so, I mean, that, to me, that makes it clear that. We need custodial because the, the exhibitor can't install this. The staff can't install this. What about trustees? Are they immune?
You'd be considered a volunteer and like, yeah, volunteer.
Volunteer staff.
Yeah, it's a liability.
Alright, so it sounds like we need word from. Custodial then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can find that out.
Great, well. I don't think we have much more on the agenda, so if there's no further discussion. I will allow Beth to get back to Glee. And in, in Kit Kat bars. Now, I'm not trying to cut it short, but if there's, is there anything else, or do we feel this is ready to go to legal? And we don't need to necessarily bring this to the Board of Trustees. To be approved until we feel it's the right time and we have the, the response from, from custodial, if they'll be able to help us hang the artwork. So I feel like it's ready to go to legal, any, anybody? Okay, great. Very good. Any discussion on art display policy? Okay. So. Next on the agenda. You have it in front of you, anybody? If this said in the next meeting date, right? Okay. No new business? Do we have any members of the public? I see five participants. So I will open the floor for public input. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to set our next meeting date. Meetings are generally the, the week before and or after the, the trustee meeting. So, right, and the next trustee meeting is the week before Thanksgiving, right? So we moved that one. So, let's see. So the next trustee meeting is on the sixteenth. That means we would be meeting on the ninth. I'd probably say that. Next meeting would be the thirtieth. If, if we're gonna meet on a Wednesday, November thirtieth. How many policies do we have in legal's hands at the moment?
I don't have anything. I have to send the camera one. I tend not to get a response unless I show up to office hours and a new, and office hours have not been announced. So I'm waiting for that date to be set because then I can send it and then make an appointment to discuss it office hours.
Okay. So. November thirtieth, sound like a, a, an appropriate date. Okay. Very good, so.
I would like to prioritize reviewing our meeting room and facility rental policy because we've had it for a year. And one question that I get some pushback on is it, it says that like. In the interest of being a Gallicarian and guiding lots of different groups in, and no one group feeling like the library is their sole meeting place. We ask people to make a reservation, hold their meeting, and then make the next reservation, but people really want to block book. And I know our scout troops in particular want a, a consistent place to meet. And they want to schedule their meetings out for, you know, the duration of, say, the school year or even a calendar year. So I am getting more pushback about that, that people want to be able to do block bookings, which. The meeting room policy does not say is not allowed, but it does say that we want to rotate people in, so we haven't been allowing it to kind of see how the popularity. Has been. But it's been a year, so I, I think it's an appropriate time to revisit it.
Okay, great. We can add that to the agenda for the thirtieth.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is I have sent it out to staff and we have a staff meeting on Monday morning. I've asked them to give feedback. But I think we should send it to the board to review and then have them send feedback to this committee. So that we have feedback to look at. Before we meet the thirtieth.
Send the feedback from the staff to the board, not the policy committee?
I'm sorry, I think we should send the current policy. To staff and to the board and solicit feedback in advance of our next meeting on the thirtieth of November.
Yep. Got it, thank you.
Okay. The frontline staff certainly have, have seen, you know, feedback from people, so.
Yeah.
And if we get the agenda posted early, we can include the two policies, so members of the public have a chance to look at it and can come with questions or send feedback.
Great. Thank you, Beth. Any other discussion regarding what should come on the next agenda?
So I, I would like to look at donation policy, but I, I said in our board meeting. That I, I need a memorandum of understanding between the friends and either the trustees or the town to clarify. Who owns donations that come in before we can write a library donation policy about what we do and don't accept.
Yep.
So I'm trying to move that along, right? But, so maybe donations can be a December.
Yeah, so I think at the trustee meeting. Karen and I discussed that we would work on that memorandum of understanding together first.
Great.
I'll make sure to connect with her on that.
Thanks.
Great. Okay. The next item on the agenda is. The adjournment, so I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn at seven forty-one, this is best.
Okay, motion made in seconds.
Second.
Great, wish me a in a second, any discussion? Great, hearing none, all in favor, Erin, I, Beth?
Hi.
Debbie?
Hi.
And John?
John, I.
Great. I declare the meeting adjourned.